So we do have a quorum. I was expecting an additional member for the quorum. But that's, that's good if we can get started before we move on and actually start. And I just want to say how proud I am of, you know, all of you for serving in the Lawler School Committee. This is, you know, very important for a lot of our parents and students. So I appreciate that. Let's do a call to order. John, I believe you will do the roll call.
Yes, so Patricia Mariano. Joshua.
Present. Present.
Enrique currently is not there and then Rafaela is currently not there. And then May Vasquez.
Present. Now please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Any public comments? Let me, I do have a resident who submitted for a public comment. I will read it for the record if you're with me. This came from Mr. Norman Hutchins. Hello, Mr. Mayor and school committee members. It's about time someone had a school committee meeting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now my comment, we have three years for a turnaround plan where it's it. And also, why are you going to put the high school back to the way it was performing before receivership? Ask the superintendent to get rid of that. To get rid of the fat of the high school. And that is the only public comment that was submitted to me via email. Thank you, Mr. Hutchins, for your submission. I don't know if any other school committee members or if the superintendent received any additional public comments for the record. Okay, seeing there's none, moving on to new business. I have a superintendent's report. Good evening Superintendent Paris.
Good evening.
Welcome. We have your report addressing high needs return update, the budget update, and teaching and learning highlights. You now have the floor.
Great, I'll share my screen. So I want to share with you updates on students that are with us right now in person. And then I'll brief you on the plans to hopefully return more students soon. So we have devised three faces for our high need students. Our high need students are comprised of students who are else, those are newcomers, students with disabilities, students who are homeless or in foster care. And then there are additional students that we have deemed also need the additional face time. And those are students who have been struggling with the virtual learning environment. Here is the breakdown and timelines of those faces. You see that we started that back in January. On the left-hand side column, that's when we asked our staff to return. We engaged in additional training for them, including safety and health protocols. Following, very shortly after that, in January, we asked our second group of students. And then just this week, we asked and received our third group of students. So here, what we did is we asked our staff members to engage in a staff survey to know their interest and we did a match. So for example, if you were interested and you were ready to come back into our buildings, we would then call families and invite them into in-person return for those high need students. This is just a summary of the staff members that indicated that interest in returning in person. Then the principals did the heavy lift of prioritizing those students and making those matches, including the ones that I just mentioned to you all. You should note that the students saw in five days a week and they are following the same schedule as the students who are home in the remote model, which is eight o'clock, give or take, because there's a little bit of difference in the high school, to 1:30 PM. After that, students have the opportunity to be in enrichment activities. Here's just, give you a visual of what's happening in schools right now. You can see that there's temperature check by various staff members. And in this one, you see that the students are being kept six feet apart. They have masks, they're on their Chromebooks accessing school. I have spent lots of time with the kids who are in our buildings right now. And I can tell you that a pattern that I've seen is that they're have said to me how much quiet it is to be back in the buildings. And the other thing that they've shared with me is that they're getting the help that they need directly from their teachers. This is just the breakdown of the different programs, just give you a flavor of what that looks like. And when I mention staff member, that does include nurses, it includes our LPNs, it includes paras, it includes custodians, it includes, I mean, you know, the whole gamut that needs to be present in buildings in order for us to safely and successfully run our buildings. And just, I wanted to highlight this left bottom picture. This is one of my dear friends here. You see that she's pointing and she has six fingers up. I said to her, I called her by her name. I said, I'm so happy to see you. Look at you, you're so grown up. You must be like 10 years old. She said, no, I'm six. In fact, she's only three and a half years old. She's a preschooler, but she was feeling very proud of herself. And so she elevated her, her age just a little bit and I said, you've done a great job. And I can go on and tell you many stories that kids have shared with me. But I just thought that, you know, showing you some visuals would, would give you an idea of that experience that students, teachers, and families are having. Just again, some more visuals of the different classrooms. This is just a potpourri, everything from the elementary preschoolers all the way up to our high schools, which you saw much earlier. All across here and take any questions or comments that you all may have.
Superintendent, thank you very much for the presentation. Now I am going to open the floor to questions or comments by any member of the school committee. Are there any questions? Seeing there's none.
Yes.
School committee member Josh Alba.
Thank you, Mayor. Superintendent, use the interest form to return to school completed by the staff. He said there was 414 staff interested in returning. I heard that there was an interest form to, or of some kind of returning to school to parents, is that right? And is there any data for that?
So we also surveyed our families and this was back in December, just to let them know that we were preparing for reentry for their high need students. But a lot of this was phone calls. They were personal phone calls made. The largest survey was just to get a feel for how many families would be comfortable with that. In addition, I held virtual coffee meetings with families to answer any questions that they would have regarding safety and health concerns.
Any, can you give us a sense of how many families wanted to return or? Yeah, yeah, please.
Sure. So we had for high need students was about 3% of our families. That's just under 2,000. And out of that, we had about under 1,000 families.
Thank you Superintendent.
You're welcome.
Thank you Superintendent. Thank you, Mr. Alba. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Any questions, comments?
Yeah, I have a question.
Mr. Guzman.
Thank you. Superintendent Paris, you then mentioned a couple like cons and pros. So one pro that the kids are saying is like, I'm finally back at school. I'm with my, my teacher. Are we seeing a better relation with the family? What is the protocols that we're following when the kids are getting dropped out in school? And, and are we seeing any cons in between the times that they are getting dropped off? Or we seeing a lot of kids are not making it to the five days a week?
You know, at this time, because students have been home for so long and we are providing transportation, the relationship with the families is, I think one of the upsides of this has been we've bonded more closely. Families are very open to communicating their needs and so we are accommodating as much as possible. One example of that is that we, we changed the policy of two miles, which is how you can qualify for transportation to reducing that to one mile. We thought it was very important for our high need students to have access to transportation and not be a barrier to coming to school.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Your school committee, Patricia Mariano.
Superintendent, with the governor's announcement today about teachers coming up on the list for vaccinations, do you feel that there'll be more teachers wanting to come back to school and more children ultimately?
I think so. In combination with the announcement of the commissioner that he will be presenting to the board on Friday, his strong desire to ensure that all students in the Commonwealth return back as soon as possible, that will happen.
Okay, and as a follow-up, would you please share with the committee if we've had any instances of an outbreak of COVID since the kids have come back?
We have not. What we have had is exposure and we expect that to happen. And that's defined by someone who has identified themselves to be a close contact with someone. And as a precautionary measure, we take different measures. We can either quarantine that classroom, we can quarantine the individual, so we take different. But we have not had any clustering, which I think is the question here. And clustering is defined by one, two or more people in our schools being infected. We have not had that.
Thank you. That's great news.
Thank you. And in relation to the vaccines for teachers, I just want to add that here in the city of Florence, we will begin pre-registration for teachers effective essentially now to ensure that they, not only for teachers, but also early childhood educators at home, so daycare providers, to ensure that they have access to the vaccine as soon as possible. We will be opening our own vaccination site. And as you know, we also have the South Lawrence East School. So I do encourage any teachers that is listening to pre-register. Once, you know, potentially next week, starting on Monday, we will start filling in slots for those vaccines. But you could pre-register now and then we will call you back starting Monday to fill in slot for the 11th on.
Share.
School committee member Guzman.
I have one follow-up question. Ms. Paris, when, while we're getting the vaccinations now and right, we're going to expect more teachers all right, coming back to school, we're hopefully going to right, be welcoming more, more students. Are we, because right, there's been a talk about the three feet, right? Are we going to follow that or are we thinking to stick with the six feet? Because you didn't mention it a couple of minutes ago where right now that's what we're following. But as we, right, we had to reduce space to put more kids in. Are we even thinking of moving from six feet down to three feet? Or are we going to stick only with a six feet?
Sure, it's a great question. The guideline continues to be between three and six feet. What we have done in our analysis is that either way, either three or six feet, we cannot bring all kids back safely. For those reasons, we're going to maintain six feet at all times when possible, including rest breaks and the time when our children are eating different meals.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Seeing there's no further questions or comments in reference to the high needs return update, we'll move on to the budget update. Superintendent Paris?
Wait, I'll share my screen once more. I want to share with you our budget process. This is fiscal year 2122. So here is the timeline for the budget process. It starts with school planning meetings. Back in December, we collaborated with our budget committee to design the budget priorities. In January, the school department leads had access to their budgets in a, in a software that we call My Budget File. It's very budget friendly for school leaders and their teams to design their school-based budgets. This, last month in February, we started with our school planning meetings. And those are designed to have school leaders and their teams align themselves to district goals, budget priorities, and then school needs. We embarked in that process for the past two weeks. We're in, we're at the final tail end of that. And then we're going to be hosting and having two budget hearings followed by a vote. And lastly, we are going to send the budget up to the city council. Here are the priorities, school priorities embedded with the budget goals. As you see, student achievement is at the top of our list. And you can see in the right-hand side, the definition of that, followed by student support. Student supports, you can think about all the SCL, social emotional, all the mental health care that of course our students are going to need after this pandemic. We consider that trauma. Followed by our strong desire to continue to deepen our recruiting efforts for staff members that look and speak like our students. And lastly, our commitment to deepening our family and partnerships with, with all of our community. Here's the overview. I just wanted to give you a flavor of what that looks like. It's really important to us that our school leaders and school-based teams work very closely with teachers. And so they make all of those decisions. Then they also work with the school leadership team. The school leadership team is comprised of parents, students, teachers, and school leaders. And then during the school planning meetings, here is the outline, as I shared with you, of what we expect every school team to bring forth to us. So I also want to invite, sorry, let me stop the share here. I want to invite Ms. Mariano to speak on behalf of that process. She has been intimately participating for the last two weeks. And we think that is important that folks on our board understand the process, what we call kind of behind the scenes, because that helps us roll up the larger budget. And again, the priority here is what every school needs. It's based on what students and families need.
Ms. Mariano?
Yes, I've, I've had the opportunity for the past couple of weeks to participate in the budget meetings with the school leaders. And I am very, very impressed with the goals that each school leader has brought to the meeting that support the district goals. They're very thoughtful and very well planned out. After, there's much discussion with, with the goals to make sure that the, the school leadership team, Mrs. Paris's team is able to understand what the, what the schools have in mind, what they'd like to do to support the district goals. From that point, the calendar is discussed, the school calendar, as far as the number of days, professional development days, family engagement pieces. And then the principals go into their budget and what they've aligned their, their allocation to. And there's a lot of back and forth and support from the district leadership team for the principals. What I, what I found very, very interesting is that the, that the school leadership team is really supporting the individual principals, both financially and through formulating all their plans for the coming year. It's, it's a fantastic process. I can't say enough about it. It's something, Mia, that you might want to look at for the city, for your budget. The, the document that they use is user-friendly and the principals have embraced it. From that point, curriculum materials are discussed with the curriculum specialists on the school leadership team. And then the best part of all, which is my favorite, is at the end of the meeting, the team asks the principal, what is your wish, if you could have something? And it's not a flagrant wish on the part of the principals. It's very, very thoughtful from another fine arts teacher to maybe another support staff or another special ed teacher. They've really looked at their schools and come up with what exactly they need for a wish list. I can't say enough about the process and I have to commend the superintendent and her team for developing such a, I, the only word I can describe it is user-friendly process. I wish when I was a principal that that process was in place because I remember how I agonized from my budget presentation. But this is, this is phenomenal and, and I just love the process. And I enjoy every one of the meetings that I go to. And I, and I'm able to share some input too, which, which makes it really nice. Thank you.
Very much, Pat, for sharing that information. I greatly appreciate it. Are there any questions or comments by members of the school committee?
Mrs. Chair.
Sure, now committee member Guzman.
Yes, I, on the know of user-friendly process and thank you, Pat, for mentioning that. That there's a, right, a wish that a principal definitely wants for the type of community, right? Because I think about schools on the different districts that they are as little communities that represent those families and kids, right? So they all have different priorities and what they think is, is needed. So I'm hoping, Ms. Paris, that we're able to, if we're able to, get some information on, on the budgets itself on these specific schools, if we're able to start a conversation with them, especially on that wish, right? On that wish that they're looking for on certain things, right? That they, they have thought about it before, but you know, we were unable to get. I feel like if we're able to, to gain that information and know, right, having a budget line by line on what the specifics go to, I think that would be a great, a great resource to have, to support our schools that we're representing.
Sure, and as Ms. Mariano mentioned, every meeting ends with us asking the school team, tell us, what's your wish? And examples of that include adjustment counselors, social workers. It includes special education teachers, ESL teachers. It also includes things like, I wish I had a new playground. I wish I had, you know, so other tangible things. And we will be developing all of that into our budget book in the next three to four weeks as we complete all of these meetings. And then we try to reconcile with our budget. At this moment, the governor's budget is still not out. So we don't have a final number for us to be granting anything. We're level funded at this moment, but most certainly we'll be rolling, rolling it up into a budget book and we will make that available to you.
Awesome, thank you. And just a follow-up, do you, have you had any conversation the whereabouts of the Student Opportunity Act funds?
That's also pending. We're incredibly hopeful that that will also come through. And for that, the big, big things on that is on the social emotional aspect of our work and also on the special education piece of our work, but nothing yet on the Student Opportunity Act better.
Thank you.
May I add one other thing, Mr. Mayor? I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Ms. Mariano.
All right, Superintendent, I'm not sure if you mentioned the principals developed a plan with the teacher leadership team, but then with the student support team, the, the community is involved, the parents are involved. And that's the, that's the beauty of this whole process. That, that the principal gets feedback and ideas from the whole community, the whole school community, which makes this a, a great process when it comes to wish lists and things that the school needs. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that, Ms. Mariano. Okay, moving on to the next topic is teaching and learning highlights.
Sorry, Mayor, I have a question.
Sure, school committee member Alba.
Thank you. Yeah, I, um, kind of along the same lines as Jonathan Superintendent. Well, I'm really concerned with, or really interested slash concerned with the social emotional health that you were talking about. And I'm glad that you're, you're emphasizing those points as well. And I'm, I'm kind of curious, because I don't know exactly what mental health supports exist currently. But since we're talking about the budget, how does the budget for social emotional supports, mental health supports for students compared to last year?
Right, so as I showed, as I shared with you all, that is one of our top priorities and remains a priority. It was, it's a multi-year goal. And that includes a number of FTEs. Folks like BCBAs, there are behavior analysts, folks who are well, well-versed on how to support students, anything from tiny behaviors to what we call big stuff. Then we also have adjustment counselors. There's a clinically trained folks as well, social workers. You are very familiar with that. But it's not just that, it's also the skill building of each teacher that is needed. As you know, we are a restorative justice district. And that is a multi-year commitment that we have to training staff members, families, and kids on those practices. We believe that being a restorative justice district allows for us to have really meaningful relationships with our families and our kids. So you will see that our, all of our classrooms do circles as an example. But I think to your question and related to the budget is the FTEs that are attached to the social emotional and mental health needs of our students and families.
Thank you. The, I remember, God, the last year was a blur, pandemic. Yeah, yeah. So, okay, so, so what I'm hearing is that the restorative justice program that was piloted, I think, two years ago has extended throughout the whole district?
It is a commitment. It's not a pilot. So I think we can call ourselves a restorative district because it's a values-driven commitment, yes.
Fantastic, thank you. Thank you Superintendent. Okay, now moving on to the next line is teaching and learning highlights.
Great, thank you. So my colleague Dave is going to share the screen and we're going to give you a flavor of what's happening in our classroom in a video.
So, welcome back to the Lawler School. You guys are right up here in room six with Ms. Liz and Ms. Cora, your teachers. Good morning and hello.
My name is Katherine Cora and I'm a kindergarten teacher at the Lawler School. The most exciting thing is that my kids are learning and making progress. So I have many students who have never been in school before. This is their first experience. So just seeing them learn the letter names and sounds and learning the letters in their name makes me feel like we're getting it right because they're learning. Whose name is this name? Whose name is this name?
Me.
Good morning, Ro Daisy.
Good morning, Mrs. Daisy.
Good morning, Ro Delcy.
What is your favorite thing about kindergarten?
Dancing.
Say, I like dancing.
I like dancing.
Junior, what do you like about school?
I like to play for my friends.
You like to play with your friends. Awesome. My kids are happy and excited to come to school every day. We do a feelings check-in and they talk a lot about how excited they are to be in school and to see their friends. So I do feel like we are making a lot of progress in forming our community.
I'm here yourself, honey. Thank you.
I'm in the green zone.
Great. Do you want to share why you're feeling in the green zone?
I'm happy because I have
A beautiful picture. That's a
I have to say, Louis, that you really have learned a lot of English lately, a lot, like able to, you know, answer on it in English.
Good job, Louis. Kiss your brain. So smart.
So hard.
Beautiful picture. I love your details.
I'm in the green zone.
Do you want to share why you feel green zone today?
I'm in the green zone because I was having a good nap and I'm really excited for my mommy to come back back home and I'm going to have so much fun with Emma inside my mommy's belly and we're going to have a family party in here.
That's so exciting, Jane. You're going to be a wonderful big sister, I can tell.
Yeah, she is.
And I do think that we have a deeper connection with our families because the kids are in their homes and the families are literally right there helping their kids.
Are you guys ready to get started? All right, me too. I'm going to share my screen. So everyone's going to have their own space. All right, we'll come and do that for you. And while you're in that space, you're going to be working on your project. And at any point in time, if you feel, oh, I don't know what I'm supposed to be doing. Where am I supposed to be? How is this working? Oh, my goodness, I don't know what to do. We have created, Mr. Rodriguez and I have created this did I sheet for you, which will allow you to actually look and reflect upon your own work. All right, so let me show you how it works. I'm working on my project and I'm like, what the heck am I supposed to be doing? I don't know. Well, I'm going to look at the sheet. I'm going to say, did I choose an ideal from the Declaration of Independence? Did I choose either equality, democracy, rights, liberty or opportunity to focus on? If I did, great, check. If I didn't, well, that's what I should start doing. All right, I need to choose one of them. All right, if I did that, I put a check mark, I move forward. Says, did I identify the problem Americas, America or Americans are having living up to the ideal today? If I did, great, check. If I didn't, well, that's where I'm going to focus. All right, ah, I need to make sure that I identify the problem.
I know, I'm just trying my best because like every day is, I see a whole lot of new worksheets, like not just one new tab, it's like multiple. I get like, I'm not going to lie to you, I get confused when I see that.
And dude, I have 100% hear what you're saying and it's the same for me, you know what I mean? Like just the amount of emails and meetings I have to go to, like to keep it all in track, it's hard. And it's not something that we're necessarily used to doing, but I just came into this room. You had taken a little time from the beginning of class to eat your breakfast and you were still doing exactly what you were supposed to do. So you obviously are getting good at it. You know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, I was just, you know, get it out the way because I'm have to start talking to my teachers to make noticeable what what I'm about to try to do when it comes to my grades and stuff like that.
Yeah, but Stephen, if you continue to work like this, you're going to be just fine. I mean, you you whether you're able to go into a classroom, find the assignment where we're supposed to be working, like get started, all kind of on your own. Those are skills, man, and those are skills that are going to translate really well to work. And if you're able to do that stuff here, I'm sure you're able to do it in other classes and I'm sure you're going to do great. Now, if you ever need any help, man, like I'm here for you, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so shoot me an email, whatever, I can talk to your teachers with you, whatever you need.
So as you can see, they're working really hard behind the scenes here. We're extremely proud of our teachers and all the work that they have to do to stay and keep our kids engaged and connecting with our families. I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
Superintendent, thank you very much for sharing the video. It was very reassuring that our, you know, our youngster are doing the best they can and so are the teachers. So I appreciate the, you know, the strong effort behind the scenes that we often don't get to see. Are there any questions or comments from the school committee members to the superintendent?
No.
Questions, okay. Fantastic. So we'll move on to the next line, which is school community communications. I have scheduling regular monthly meetings. It was placed on the agenda by one of the school committee members. Does anyone wishes to address this?
Yeah, so, um, I think we just wanted pretty straight up, we wanted to schedule out some meetings so that we could meet regularly, monthly. As I understand it, school committee used to meet and from conversations with you, Mayor, that the school committee used to meet first of every month on Wednesdays. Well, the the first Wednesday of every month, sorry, at seven. And I guess I'm proposing that we continue that tradition. Meeting that way for for every month, at the very least through through June.
So this is, so the the idea is to have monthly meetings during the school calendar year?
Yes.
Okay. How do how do the other members of the members feel?
You hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Matos.
Because I have no audio. All I have is, I mean, I have no video. I feel that we should be meeting and I think that we should be joining meeting with the stable and see if we can come up with something together and at least we'll be involved a little bit more in all the tasks that the school is, bring it on. Think if we can join forces with them also, we're going to be more successful.
Thank you, Mr. Matos. So in my conversations with the superintendent and conversations with all their school committee members, I do believe that communication is critical to ensure that we can all understand what the school department is doing, you know, the the leadership of the superintendent today. So so I do support the idea of having regular meetings simply because that way we can all be informed and, you know, that way share reliable information to our, you know, parents and students when they ask. You know, and I'm grateful that the superintendent has provided, you know, valuable information today that we can now go out there and disseminate. You know, I think that information is power and if we have that information, we can empower all of our parents in the process and, you know, support the efforts that have been done at the school department. So so I do support the idea of having regular meetings as well. So seems like everyone is in agreement. Mr. Guzman?
Yeah, I feel like it's definitely something that we need to put in the books. Like scheduling regular meetings is just, our our community needs to see us, right? That I feel like there's going to be many times where our meeting is going to be redundant to the LAE board, right? So there's going to be times that the superintendent might not be invited, right, to our meetings, but we have stuff to discuss, like certain things like today, like the MCAS. There's a big thing behind that that we can talk about, that really the superintendent can give us like data, but not exactly help us on what we're trying to do, right, on joining the dozens of school committees out there that are doing resolutions behind us. And I feel like, well, when he get pointed out, right, that we want to talk about other things like joining meetings, like communicating with the LAE board and being more out there as depending on the advocacy work that everybody's doing, we are, we've been out there, right? But we actually want to be out there more closely with the administration because we we want to do that. We want to make sure that we have a good relationship and and be able to communicate things that are happening with our constituents throughout the city.
Thank you, Mr. Guzman. Is anyone else? Okay, seeing there's none. I I do, so then, so we'll we'll schedule what has been regular meetings, you know, April seventh will be next and we'll do May, so by, so we'll we'll be able to have three more meetings before this, the end of the 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 school year. That way all of us have the same information.
Mr. Mayor?
Ah, yeah, Ms. Mariano.
Do you want that in the form of a motion?
Is that is that in a form of motion, Ms. Mariano?
Yes, I know that we schedule monthly meetings with the school committee.
Is there a second?
Second, yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been second by Mr. Guzman. Motion was made by Ms. Mariano to schedule regular meetings on the first Wednesday of each month for the remainder of the school year. It has been made by Ms. Mariano, second by Mr. Guzman in the discussion. Seeing there's none, roll call please, John.
My apologies, that was on mute. My apologies. Ms. Mariano?
Yes.
I'm going to go in order of what's on my screen. Mr. Alba?
Yes.
Mr. Matos?
Yes.
Guzman?
Yes.
Mayor Vasquez?
I voted yes. The motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Mariano. Next item is joint meetings with the LAE. So anyone that wishes to address this?
Yeah, I can speak a little bit on a, I feel, I feel like we we, the conversation has been there on on both areas. And I think it will be an opportunity as a group, right, to come together. I feel the conversation behind it is for us to be joining them on these different type of committees that they're serving on individually. And Pat probably can say more about other committees and and the second of committees that that happen. We cannot vote on these issues with them, but I feel being part of the conversation and advocating, right, for issues that are pertaining to our constituent, I think it's a it's a good thing to do. So being able to communicate with them and be part of their committees when they're having them and and the different ones, specifically the turnaround plan. I think it will be a win-win for the city and for our constituents.
Is there anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Mariano?
Yes, I agree with Jonathan. I think it's, you know, we've been talking about this for a long time as far as joint meetings with the with the school committee because eventually the the state is going to return the school to local control. But I think it, I I think we need to think about a couple of things. I think one, we need to, the school committee needs to go through some training as far as budget. Maybe curriculum. I'm trying to think of some things off the top of my head. So I think we should schedule some trainings for the school committee so that they're in preparation to become, you know, when when the school department returns to local control. In the meantime, if we could schedule maybe quarterly meetings with the school committee and give them a chance to get their feet wet with us. It might move us forward, say, for the first year and then the second year have it every two months. And then hopefully, you know, we're back to local control. I don't know how the rest of the gentlemen feel about that. I mean, this is just off the top of my head, but I do agree that we need to start meeting together and we need to prepare ourselves to take over when the time does come.
To share.
I agree with Mrs. Mariano. We should be joining meeting with them because if we're here to learn the way that the city have to be run, I think it's a lot of thing that we can pick up from them. And if we are not too sure, that is our time to speak out and we may be getting clarification and also getting training.
Miss, Mr. Share. I, yeah, I completely agree with everybody. Definitely, I'm for joint meetings. We have to do them. I feel like the, where we can better fit on this, right? Because we're going to be, one thing is, we don't want to, we have bandwidth, right? So I want to make sure that we're 100% on this, right? And that we're able to contribute when we join the the LAE board and pass out a best, right? Professional development, we have seen this elsewhere. This conversation between mask and also Dussie to hopefully getting some professional development. I've also communicated this with the superintendent on basically, and she could tell me if I'm lying, but she said it, like if we want to be in a committee, if we want to be part of some type of work that she can offer, she's all for it. And I feel like it's something that definitely we need to do. We need to start getting our feet wet on these type of areas because it's not that the Dussie and the the state is going to give us the school back quick or in one day. We need to gradually, right, be involved until we're ready to take it back. And and how we are going to be ready is first, our schools need to do better. And two, the school committee needs to be a well-run professional school committee that can take over. And I feel that doing joint meetings on committees with them will be best. And then as Pam mentioned, Corley also participating with them.
Can I, can I make a suggestion that just came to me and I just want to throw this out?
Sure, Pat, go ahead.
How about if we form a subcommittee of the school committee with the subcommittee of the LAE to hammer this out as far as scheduling, as far as professional development and as far as joint meetings? And come up with a definite plan?
So something that I think is critical here to ensure that this happens is that the LAE board has to be on board with this decision. So so let's say that the school committee tonight could take a vote that will be, my recommendation will be that you ask the LAE board and the commissioner to allow for this to happen. So, you know, correspondence will go out and a decision will be made at the LAE board and at the commissioners' level because the superintendent doesn't have the authority to make this happen. As the mayor, I don't have the authority to make this happen. And as a committee, we do not have the authority to make this happen. So I think that it's important that if the end goal is to start joint meetings, we should do it via the appropriate channels requesting it. So so we maintain that good open line of of communication. So I don't know if there's a motion to maybe send correspondence to both the commissioner for his, you know, approval and the LAE board to do something similar to what Pat has recommended. Is there a motion on the floor?
Yeah, I'm happy to introduce a motion to write a letter to the commissioner and the LAE proposing quarterly, I like that idea, Pat, quarterly and then eventually bi-monthly meetings with some specific trainings in there. But I wonder, I wonder if the motion would be for us to have a a subcommittee first to write the letter? Or or just myself write the because the proposal first?
No, so so I I'm going to go based on what I, you know, I come out from the city council and as the legislative party of government, when I served on the on the council, whoever was doing the minutes essentially writes the the letter based on what the motion states. So they're they're just repeating what the motion says in that letter. So so I think who, I'm assuming John is writing the minutes. So I don't know if she'll be the one to write the letter on that on on behalf of the committee. If there's an affirmative vote, John will help us with the letter and that that will simply do it. I wouldn't, so remember, it it has to be collective action. So the the letter has to be reflective of what the the vote does, not individual members, you know, seeking the, you know, different things. So so it has to be what we all agree to.
Thank you for the clarity. First time school member, longtime listener. Yeah, so the motion is for a school committee to send correspondence to the commissioner and the LAE to have quarterly meetings and at least three relevant budget curriculum and really process training or something like that. That's what you said, Pat? All right, next meeting?
So there's there's a motion on the floor by school committee member Joshua Alba to send correspondence to the commissioner and the LAE board for considering allowing joint committee meetings with the LAE board and the Lawrence School Committee quarterly. And including, but not limited to, three training opportunities that have been previously mentioned. John, if you missed anything, let us know.
I have I have a video as well, so I'll double check on it, but I'm pretty good, but I will clarify as I listen again.
Fantastic. I appreciate that.
Taking the motion.
There's some the motion has been properly seconded by Mr. Matos. Any further discussions?
Could I could I add a friendly amendment, Jonathan? I mean,
Hi, your on you.
May I add a friendly amendment, Josh? Maybe the tail end of that should be relevant professional development trainings which will prepare the school committee to assume local control.
Mr. Alba, do you accept?
I accept. Thank you.
So an amendment has been introduced by Ms. Mariano, accepted by Mr. Alba.
Mr. Share.
Mr. Guzman.
I just want to point out, I think the the letter should be more focused on joint meetings rather than a specific quarterly. I think the letter, when it gets to them, it should be more open-minded to have to get more, right? I feel like for quarterly. I I personally believe that it's best for our interests to be on committees with them rather than a quarterly on their regular meetings. I feel our that's where we're needed the most when they're speaking about a turnaround plan and they bring these recommendations over to the regular meetings where we won't be able to vote, right, or just put input. But when we're on the grounds with them on the committees and being able to discuss and put our input, I think our our job would be better served there. So I don't know if we can reframe it and basically send it all as just doing joint meetings rather than putting on a quarterly meetings. And when we do the acceptance and we have that committee, subcommittee meet, then the details come after.
Do you present that as as an amendment to Mr. Alba?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Alba, do you accept the amendment that has been presented by Mr. Guzman?
I wonder about I I wanna I wanna propose. I hear what you're saying, John, Jonathan. I wanna stick with the proposal of definitely getting the quarterly full-body meetings with the LAE. And but this letter won't like and then and then we'll make a decision with the LAE at those quarterly meetings to form potentially, right? Subcommittees with 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 the with the LAE. I think once we have the permission to meet, that'll give us permission to form all further make make decisions with the LAE or advise the LAE there and that we don't have to. Yeah, does that like or does that make any sense? Does that make sense or do we?
So right now, the option that you have is to either accept or not accept the thing presented. So it the motion that we're discussing is your motion. So you control the motion.
Can I can I talk at the time?
Discussion by Mr. Matos.
The reason I believe the reason that we want to join meeting with them is to start getting training. So we don't have to put a quarter what meeting or how many meeting we have to be with them, but at least to accept us to be in the circus. Because we we learned from them and that is the reason that they are here. Teach us or to prepare us to take the helm of the city school committee. So what we need in that letter is to get in. That's my opinion.
Okay, so Mr. Alba, you have a friendly amendment that has been presented by Mr. Guzman. Do you accept or deny this?
I'm gonna deny it because I think the being able to ask for the specific quarterly meetings will also give us one meetings that we could look forward to and prepare for. And then we can meet on our own to make further decisions on what we want to do. Then leaving it open for I want to be able to propose to commission or something specific. Then then leaving it open to having one meeting this whole year.
Fantastic. So so we do have a motion on the floor. John, please roll call.
Ms. Mariano?
Yes.
Mr. Alba?
Yes.
Mr. Matos?
Yes.
Guzman?
I'm staying.
Here, Vasquez.
My vote is yes, the motion carries. Okay, moving on with the agenda. We have COVID-19 family resources. Is there anyone in the committee that wishes to speak on this matter?
Yeah, I kind of just wanted to get updates on what family resources are here. We've been hearing from that there are from the LA meetings and from the youth working groups with NGOs that there's grab and go lunches. And I don't know what other services are being provided to the city. I know that the schedule for the grab and go lunches has changed a few times. I just want to get the updated where can parents find resources beyond academics?
Superintendent?
Sure. So the schedule, food service schedule has changed based on needs. And we still have sites that are strategic across the district and there's multiples and we've expanded those hours between one, excuse me, 11 and 2 P. M. And those are available to our families year round, including during our vacation stints. In addition to that, our families are eligible for PBET. As you know, that is the pandemic version of additional resources so that families can have access to meals. And then our families are also getting what we call school supplies and we set up various days throughout the month where families pick up their materials. We have taken every precaution to ensure that when families do come, they either come to us and do the pickup or we mail them the supplies that they need. Lastly, they have access to resources in the form of clothing. So we have organizations that we work with very closely. And of course, we always have families who are in transition with housing and we do our best to also connect them with the resources to ensure that their housing insecurity is being met.
Thank you, Superintendent. Any other further questions or comments in reference to this particular subject? Seeing there's none.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. Superintendent Paris, I'm I'm not sure if you mentioned it that each building has a technical support person. Should the Chromebooks, if the parents and the children are having problems with the Chromebook books, the this person will troubleshoot with the families to make sure things are up and running.
That's fantastic.
Which I think is a fabulous support for the families during remote learning.
I think that's fabulous as well. Thank you for for the update on that.
Mr. Share, follow-up question.
Mr. Guzman?
Talking about the Chromebooks. Ms. Paris, are we I heard that there's there's an agreement, right, that the family sign when they take the Chromebooks or the iPads? If one of them, right, a kid breaks it, what happens then? Does the does the family get a replacement? Is there cost for this replacement? What is the resources behind that?
Superintendent?
So devices, Chromebooks and hotspots are lost, damaged, stolen, the many, many stories of every day, all the time. And the first thing we do is to ensure that the student gets replaced. And many times we're able to fix that device, but nonetheless, it doesn't matter. We do an immediate swap for that family. We have kids who have multiple losses or damages, as you can imagine. And we have the inventory to replace those as as needed.
So there's follow-up. So there is no type of fees that families have to pay on these if that happens?
There is no fee.
At the same time, we do encourage families, right, and a superintendent, that it's important that we take care of this equipment because it's very critical, you know, to ensure that all of our students have equal access to education. So so I know the superintendent has been a strong advocate of of this and so am I. That is, we have to protect the equipment because protecting the equipment means protecting, you know, the the students and their access to to, you know, education. So so once again, even though there's no fee to the families right now, as the superintendent mentioned, we will appreciate if families, you know, could be extra cautious and supportive of the equipment because it's necessary for the children and it causes an inconvenience on both ends. The schools depend and for the families, you know, to have to go through the exchange from one equipment to the other. So, you know, I know this is critical. So the superintendent could speak more if she wishes on it, but I think that she she supports the idea of taking care of this valuable equipment as much as we can. So parents, we ask you humbly to support us in that effort. You know, in ensuring that this equipment is safe for the students.
Yes, of course, we always want our equipment, all of our school supplies to be kept in good condition. Accidents do happen, things happen, life happens, you know, coffee here, milk there. Walking down the stairs, it falls, it trips. And I think our families are doing their best. Our kids are doing also their best. We are thankful to the city who generously gave us 14,000 Chromebooks. That was a gift that the city made to us at the beginning of the pandemic. As a result, we have been able to keep the invoice of these Chromebooks and hotspots for our families. So we're very grateful to the city.
Thank you. Moving on, we have remote learning, in-person, hybrid. I'm sorry, I'm gonna read it again. It says remote learning, in-person, hybrid level setting, and most recent updates. Is there anyone in the committee that wishes to address this?
Yeah, it was some level setting around how remote learning is going. I think you gave us some of the in-person and hybrid stuff earlier in your presentation. But yeah, if there's anything else that you didn't get to in the beginning, I'd be happy to hear.
As I mentioned.
Superintendent?
As I mentioned, we are five days a week with our high-needs students. And and the video that you saw is the remote version of that for students who remain in the remote setting. We hope that in the next few coming weeks, we're able to implement our hybrid model, but we're not there yet. So I will be happy to bring back an update when that happens.
Mr. Share.
Mr. Guzman?
Thank you. Ms. Paris, how there was there was a in the beginning, we we have problems, right, getting the students into the remote learning, right, and setting. And there was a decrease in attendance rate. How is that doing? Do we are we back? Are we do we have all our students in the district? Do we know where they are? What's going on with that?
Yep, we've never lost our students. I think just the follow-up, I think that was a miscommunication. And so what happens is taking attendance virtually is a little trickier than we had done before. But we are over 13,000 students strong. Attendance hovers anywhere in the high-low eighties to the mid-nineties. That is not unlike what we have seen historically when we have been in person. So chronic absenteeism remains a challenge in our district. It was the same when we were in person. It remains the same virtually.
Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, Mr. Guzman. Any further questions or comments? Okay, seeing there's none, let's move on to the next subject, which is reopening plans. Is there anyone who wishes to address this?
Sorry, writing notes. Um. Thank you. Reopening plans. Yes, um. Who sent me reopening plans? Somebody sent me reopening plans. I didn't get a chance to look at them. But do we have the LAE develop any reopening plans or has the district or develop any reopening plans? I think there were some back in December. But quite frankly, I haven't been able to do enough homework on it. Do do we have existing reopening plans to return to in-person right now?
Superintendent?
As I just mentioned, the reopening plans are in full effect. I just gave you the briefing of how many students are currently in person. So that is constitutes reopening. And as I mentioned, the hybrid planning is underway and that also constitutes reopening.
Thank you. I guess more specifically, return to full in-person learning. Is there any plan to get us to that? And how that's going to be run?
I'm unclear. Sorry.
Yeah, so so you're you're telling us about I mean, students are in person right now, how hybrid learning will be coming in a couple of weeks. And you gave us some statistics of how many students are participating in remote learning. Is there a plan for the district to return to in-person learning? Earlier, you said that with the three to six feet guideline, we can't do that. So is there a plan to be able to get us to in-person, to full in-person?
To be clear, hybrid is full in-person. I think what you're asking is will all students be five days a week? The answer is no. We cannot. We cannot accommodate 14,000 students with six feet apart in our classrooms. It will remain hybrid until it is safe to return all 13,000 students in the same in the same space without the social distancing.
Thank you, Superintendent. How are we? What are the metrics that we're using to define safe for full in-person five days a week?
Those are by city and state metrics. Health metrics. The COVID. In some, the COVID rate will be defined by the city and the state.
Right. Thank you, Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Alba. Thank you, Superintendent. Moving on, we have the next topic, which is school committee webpage and publishing mini the minutes. Mr. Alba?
Yes, um. I I we just wanted to make sure that school committee minutes were being put online. I haven't seen them historically on our LPS website. Yeah, I think if anything, I've only seen like LAE minutes. And so I know that I had spoken with Joan about getting them up. And I think the district has started to do that. So thank you for that. I guess maybe my question is, do we have a full of a full account of all the minutes that we have and I seen that we don't. And I seen that we don't have all the minutes up. There's only like six to eight minutes that I caught when I looked on our website. Is there a, a plan to get everything up and all that good stuff? And links to the videos for, for Facebook and YouTube? And making everything as accessible for school committee meetings for people to participate and note what is happening in our schools?
Okay, Superintendent?
So currently, the minutes of the last two years have been posted. Those are the ones that you are referring to. And moving forward, we certainly will continue to post them more timely.
I think that's great. Thank you, Superintendent, and thank you, Mr. Alba, for bringing this up. It's important that, you know, any residents who's unable to watch us live. I know now it's, it's more convenient that the videos usually stay on social media. So that's helpful. But, you know, having access to the minutes is, is, is very important. So I appreciate the effort there. And finally, moving on, we have MCAS. Is there anyone who wishes to address this?
Yes.
Mr. Alba?
MCAS. Just want to know from the district, it was interesting to hear that we have upwards of 13,000 students logging into remote learning. And so the, obviously, the national and the state and the local conversation has been, how well are students going to do on MCAS? And last year, we had the fortune of, I believe it was the governor and the commissioner waived MCAS for this year. And I'm wondering what the, I want to have a conversation with the school committee members and, and the superintendent about how we feel that students are going to do in MCAS this year, given how remote learning is going, given just the pandemic and the stress of all of it. And if it's fair to even require our students to take an MCAS this year, knowing that it's required unless the commissioner waives it and the state and the federal government waives it. But I, I'm wondering if the result of us, well, I guess I'll save a motion or whatever for it after hearing everybody's thoughts on this. But yeah, how do we feel that the students are going to do on MCAS? Do we feel like it's fair to put them through that? I'd rather focus on student learning and social emotional health than running them through tests and just kind of want to get a feel for what's happening and what everybody's thinking.
Any questions or comments, Superintendent?
Yep, I just want to add that, as you know, Josh, the MCAS this year is a benchmark test. We will not be held accountable for that summative test. More importantly, what we are going to be using internally is formative data that will guide our instruction and that will help teachers design what students need. And the other reminder here is that this is state and federal testing. And you're right, the commissioner is the only one who can waive that. We are going to follow through with the directive from the commissioner unless that changes.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Guzman?
Yeah, I want to just point out, like, it, it is a federal, right, requirement. And the commissioner, when that is waived to him, then he can waive such thing on our, on Massachusetts, right? And alongside the leadership that he is with. I feel like the main course here that we need to focus on is, as a, as a board, we should be joining all the school committees across the state that are formally sending a supportive message on dismantling this year's MCAS. The Superintendent just mentioned that we're not going to get reprimanded on this. But I feel like we need to put our, our statement behind it to ensure that if a recommendation later comes, that we have some type of information or, or letter out there stating that this was not good. That our, our community itself was, because of the achievement gap and the learning gap that is happening, we are going to be tend to, to fail. And I feel like we don't want that. We don't want our kids to even go through a test currently. I feel like this, this focus needs to shift somewhere else. And, but yeah, but I feel like we should be able to join the dozens of school committee out there that are sending a supportive letter onto the leadership on that scene to basically ask for this waiver and fight for it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Guzman. Do you wish to do that in the form of a motion to send correspondence to the commissioner, requesting him to take action upon this? That's the only way that, so remember, anything that you wish to do has to be in the form of a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I believe Joshua was, in the beginning, mentioned that he was gonna, after we discussed, he was gonna make a formal motion.
Joshua?
Yeah, I'll take it. Yeah, I propose go forth a motion to send correspondence to the commissioner to waive MCAS for this year. As we're hearing from parents and students alike and educators, that remote learning is going very rough, really tough. And thank you, the Superintendent, for, for the updates. But I feel like putting students through high stakes testing right now during a global pandemic that is yet to be under control is further traumatizing to the Superintendent's point. The students in a poor black and brown district such as ours that has been disproportionately impacted. So the proposal is to send the letter to the commissioner, asking him to waive MCAS for this year, given the pandemic, given the disproportionate impact of COVID on our community in order to ease the stress of our families.
Thank you. So there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second?
It's been properly second. John, rocall please.
So we're going to have any discussion on it?
Discussion, Mr. Mathos?
Due to the fact that it's been such a bad year for education everywhere, I think this motion is of great value if the state will listen to us on this issue. And I think I go for it.
Thank you, Mr. Mathos.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Mariana?
Yes. I agree that an MCAS would be adding a lot of pressure with the, on the students and the families in, in taking into consideration what we're going through at this time. But as an educator, we have to think about what the Superintendent has said. Some form of formative assessment for the kids. Because come September, when each teacher receives her new set of students, she needs data to be able to prepare lessons. She needs to know where these students. So we, we can't ignore formative assessment either. We, I'm sorry. We, we need to, we need to think of that too.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Guzman? Your name, Mr. Guzman?
And I'm definitely with Pat on that, right? Some sort of assessment, we, we know that this, what is going on, right? Is the pandemic has created a gap. There is a learning gap, there's an achievement gap. And some, some type of assessment that is controlled by the, the district and by the Superintendent, I, I believe is sufficient, right? I feel like the MCAS should not be accredited on that. I feel like I have full trust on the Superintendent and her team to do some type of informal assessment on the district to support the, the teachers and find the learning gap that, you know, we will need to employ and push forward and dismantle, apologies, to move our kids forward into the future.
Thank you, Mr. Guzman. Okay, although, John, we're going to do a rocall now.
Ms. Mariano?
Yes.
Mr. Alba?
Yes.
Mr. Mathos?
Yes.
Mr. Guzman?
Yeah.
The chair votes yes?
May have asked, did you say, I didn't hear you?
Yes.
Okay.
The motion carries. So the next item is to adjourn. But before we, I call for a motion on that, I just wish to remind all teachers that here in the city of Lawrence, we will start doing pre-registration for the vaccine efforts. As you know, you are now going to qualify to obtain the vaccine. Not only teachers, but also early childhood educators. So we are opening the lines to pre-register you to ensure that you have access to the vaccines once you are able to get them next week. I believe it's on the 11th, the first date. Am I correct? If you just not, Superintendent, the 11th is the date. So we will start pre-registration prior to that for, for the vaccine effort, okay? Another thing is tomorrow, for the general public now, there's a town hall meeting in reference to the vaccine. And we will have, you know, professionals in the healthcare industry that will be able to address any concerns brought up to, to them. So I highly encourage you to register for this town hall, which will be held tomorrow at 6:00 PM. Via Zoom, in order to register, just go to the office of the mayor's, Lawrence, MA, Facebook site. And there you're going to find an event and you can register. That way you get access to it. If you aren't able to register, we're also going to transmit live in our Facebook page. So I encourage you to, to tune in either yet soon or via Facebook. I think that it will be a very interesting dialogue with healthcare professionals. And I, I think that the community members will be able to greatly benefit from this. So thank you for, for that. Now, with that said, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion has been made by Ms. Mariano.
Second.
It has been properly second by Mr. Guzman. John, rocall please.
Hello?
We can hear you.
I can't, I can't hear you, that's why. Yeah, Ms. Mariano?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Alba?
Yes.
Mr. Mathos?
Yes.
Yes.
May have asked, was?
I voted yes to all members. I am very proud of the work we have been able to accomplish tonight. I think that this is a wonderful opportunity that we have been able to reunite and conduct these meetings. I appreciate the fact that, you know, Superintendent Paris has been very willing to provide us with valuable information. I strongly and firmly believe that if we work together, we are able to accomplish more for, on behalf of, you know, our residents, our parents, our students. So I look forward to continuing this dialogue over the next couple of months with each and every one of you. Thank you. Look forward to the next meeting on Wednesday, April 7th. Have a wonderful evening, everyone.